We get 6:10 PM and there's no report or close session per government court. Government Code 549, 57.1. Please stand and join me in regent's. And on the other part, ready to give.
Regent's to the right of the United States of America. And to your college officials, our nation, our empire, and the world, the routine access.
Go ahead and motion for approval of the agenda.
So move.
Step in. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0 for approval of the agenda. Staff reports, let's start with our new student board member Natalie Rodriguez.
Hello. So for this month of October, Barbara Webster will be hosting its fourth annual cultural festival. And then he will be there at those markets on November the first. And they'll be having live salsa dance, acid dancers, and they'll be selling food and other things. For Adele, they'll be having a color month, color month Friday on October the fourth. It'll be Army Hero Day for Army Heroes and each of us on October the 25th. It'll be taking, retaking picture day on Thursday, October 38th. Family story, Latino family literature project every Thursdays. And a college and career fair on November the first. For Bancher, they'll be having their family science night October 15th. Red ribbon week, October, October the 28th through 31st. And they'll be having an anti-bullying assembly on October the 28th. Glen City will be hosting their monthly coffee chat with principals to learn more about all the school programs and events. And they'll be asking questions, learning ways to support their children. And the Greasy Student Store is up and running. Student stores have, the student store will have the opportunity to earn greasy books and make good choices and can shop in the greasy stores for what prizes. And they will also be offering prepaid analysis with Ms. Donovan for fourth and fifth grade students. For Greasekill, they'll be having interventions. Then during, because during the, during the month of December, students were getting tested for the individual student boxes and would be identified as ID's teachers can be used for students below or above level. Family Literature Project is up and running every Wednesday for them. Greasekill kindergarten teachers will be reading and conducting kindergarten parent training on October the fourth. Wait, sorry, October the fourth, yeah. And 25 parents came and learned how to support their children in reading, writing, and math. And parents were given materials and resources to take home to use for their students. Picture makeup is October the 18th. They'll be having a presentation about nutrients, musicians. During a coffee with principal meeting on October 25th. Omega Man Anti-Bullying Assembly will be October the 28th. They'll be addressing bullying and not to be advised standards and there will be positive character. The Senate people will be keeping up every week on October 21st through November the first. McHaven will be having a coffee chat with principals on October, October 4th. The picture retake was October the 8th, movie night on October the 11th. Family Science Night at Bancher for grades second through fifth on October the 15th. Red ribbon week will also be October the 28th through November 1st. And they'll be having boards, ropes, anti-bullying assembly on October the 29th. Isabel Middle School will be having a science field trip to Castaia Dam October 11th. An avid field trip to Santa Paula Art Museum on October the 4th. Student of the Month Assembly on October the 11th. Eighth week practice SAT test during, on October the 11th. Parent conference will begin Tuesday, October 15th through October 17th. And students will be dismissed all three days at 12:35 PM. Makeup Picture Day will be October the 16th. They'll also will be having another field trip on, on October the 18th to the art museum again. Band, band will be performing at the funky patch on October the 19th. There'll be an added parent night at the cafeteria on October the 24th. A science field trip to Seco Riverside, October the 25th. And academic is, academic, academy, sorry. Academic Assembly, the seventh field trip to again the art museum on October the 25th. Spirit Thursday will be October 31st. And band will be performing on the Halloween Parade, October the 26th. Red ribbon will also be the 28th through November the 1st. And there'll be actors on the cafeteria stage, October 28th through November the 1st. And then high school activities. So for Renaissance, there'll be a financial aid presentation of October the first. Victoria College application workshop, October the 22nd. Financial aid night workshop, October the 23rd. Victoria College cultural orientation, orientation, October the 29th. Santa Paula High School, so we'll be having class dream at workshops on October the 17th. App testing for, app texting on the 26th. Counseling presentation for senior night, this September 20th, oh, it's just September 20th, my bad, I'm sorry. Stat, stat preparation academy on the 20, October 28th. Homecoming week will be October 24th, 21st through 25th. Will be having dress up days such as Duo Day, Trend Day, Disney Day, Dress Up As A Perfect Artist Day, and Class Dance Hour. We'll be having a rally halftime performance on October the 25th. Red ribbon week will be October 28th through November the 1st. Halloween Haunted Hour will be October the 9th through 31st. And we'll be having a carnival, which will have our verse, Bachelor Flash, February Lunch Rally, and Dia de los Muertos on November the 1st. We'll be having carnival, Lady Carnival Board of Ball, senior night, October the 10th. 10th senior night, October the 24th. And football senior night, November the 1st. At FFA opening closing ceremony, contest was today, October the 9th. We'll be having a meta indigenous day celebration, October, October 14th. Santa Paula High School Band Ball Contest is October the 15th. We'll be having a homecoming parade, October the 25th. And our homecoming band will be October the 26th.
Thank you for your thorough reports. And also I wanted to back up a little bit and just welcome everybody today. When you're up there, you kind of get back to meeting, you get all formal and you forget to say just the nice things like welcome. Okay, on to Superintendent to the board, Dr. Cora.
Thank you, President Urias. First of all, I want to start by telling Natalie it's an honor having her serve on our floor and giving a great job during those announcements. I want to thank Santa Paula High School Administration for handling both incidents that happened at their site today. I also want to thank Santa Paula Police Department for their assistance as well. And the district office assisted by posting messages on social media. And we also sent that message on the parents regarding the student incident, the self-lopect. I'd like to clarify, for anyone who's received misinformation regarding the district's financial status. Santa Paula Unified School District is a fiscal insolvent and has received a positive certification for this year and the upcoming two years, meaning we are targeted to meet our financial obligations for the next, for the year next to. However, the district staff is working on a plan to address our declining enrollment and deficit spending. Declining enrollment is not just a Santa Paula unified issue, it's a statewide issue. The staff plans of providing the board with further information at the end of the report. It's a statewide issue. Last evening, we were notified of possible power outages due to the high winds over the next few days. These planned outages are conducted by Southern California Edison in an effort to prevent wildfires due to downed power lines. The event of a power outage, our schools will remain open and instruction will continue as normal. Our Child Nutrition Services Department is aware of the possible power outages and has a menu that can be served should we lose power. We have been in contact with Santa Paula Police Department and they are aware of their schools will remain with them during any power outages. And most importantly, as long as you have water and restrooms to use, you can go ahead and conduct school without power. I'm hoping that the role will show. As always, the safety of our students and staff is the top priority when we update the boards and the public as needed. And lastly, last year, I informed the board that we will provide periodic updates regarding the progress of the school within the school model. It is Bell Middle School, so this evening is part of my report. Please go around break will provide a brief update. Mr. Briggs.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving us time to give an update on the intervention coordinator position in the sixth grade school within a school model. I have tonight with me a few guests that would like to share a few words. So first, I'd like to bring up the sixth grader Jessica Agbianis. And she's going to talk a little bit about her experience as a sixth grader.
I would like to show that you're going to switch teachers every now and then instead of keeping one seat in one classroom. But why don't you get a lot of choices instead of just a captain, just pop them on to your tray? You're going to have an elective like Mesa, so you get to do different activities. Right now at Mesa, we're building reviews and we had to do an Airdrop twice. For PE, we get to do it every day. We have to change into PE course to be able to do it. And for the field, you have a lot more space to go and you get a lot of space to see now where.
Thank you, Jessica. And next, I'd like to bring up the sixth grade teacher, Mr. Nupu.
My teacher perspective is definitely not as exciting as the field of food, but I agree, Jessica. Good points. From a teacher perspective, I've noticed there's a lot less E's and F's at this point in the semester. I attribute that to being able to hold the kids accountable a little bit easier by having that constant communication with my team partner. In fact, I just want you all to know that my team partner is in labor right now and she was communicating about getting her missing work in for the kids, getting that in the computer tonight so that the kids can have updated grades for parent conferences. And that's the kind of thing that can happen when we have this school, that school. There's a lot more opportunity to strategically plan exams so that the students are bombarded one day having a bunch of exams and there'll be more subjects. Helps them to be a lot more successful and less stressed. We can do multidisciplinary projects in the sixth grade. For Mrs. Cole and I, we have the students just do a scientist project. So they did the science, research and science class. And then the English writing happened in the literature class. We can do student-led conferences. We're doing student growth portfolios. It opens up opportunities for smaller group study trips, which are really powerful for students. We have one administrator, Dr. Fabulette, she knows the kids very well and gets to work with them. She's able to be more visible since we have more administrators on campus. We really get to train the students for the rigor and the challenges they face in seventh grade with going through puberty and all of those things that come with that. But keep them a little bit more away from the seventh grade, there's a nat influence. As an ELD teacher, I've noticed a change in the performance and it is a lot easier for me to stay connected with the students for teachers since I know, if I know that they have poor language arts, then I know that they have for the rest of their subjects. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Urias. I'd like to add that having additional administrators allowed us to have grade level administrators that work with grade level counselors. So they form a team to really build strong relationships with those students and they will follow them all three years. Additionally, Coway, who is our intervention coordinator, in addition to being the seventh grade administrator, he's also works along with our RTI coordinator and RTI team. And they're working hard to recognize all the positive things the students have been doing at Isbell while providing assistance to those who are needing supports. I'd like to bring Mr. Roy Coway to mention a few things that I've been working on.
Recently, we had a celebration for all our students that had 4.0. We have about 200 students. This time for a community board. Our next time celebration will be focusing on the students who made an incremental increase in their GPA. So that's something that we're focusing on. Then too, we'll be recognizing our student of the month, so that's going to change a little bit. So each teacher is going to have a chance to select a student each, each on month itself. And we're going to invite parents over to have like a little celebration of them during the morning. Provide records for them to kind of get a little bit of internet. They're going to hold the digital more intimate. And they'll also get a letter from the teacher saying why they selected you. So creating that personal certificate. And currently, we have 21 activators that are on the non-promote list. And currently, right now, I'm working on ways to help move out to making sure that they're promoting for the upcoming year. We could maybe have a manager school, so we're not working on it. We're trying to make sure that they're increasing bases from 2.0 to, I mean, from 1.1 to 2.11. That's something I'm working on right now. And with the arts guidance, we're working on a positive behavior support system for the whole school. So that's something that we're working on right now. And we're looking at attendance and suspension rates and targeting center school sites. That's something that we're working on in the board.
Thank you, Mr. Coway. Are there any questions, boards? Thank you for giving your time, please have a turn. Mr. Briggs, I'll just say to your staff and to your sixth grade student, thank you very much. You did a wonderful job, by the way. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Glad to hear that the divisions to this staff are working on. Okay, so we can maybe have votes. Do we have any? Great, please share. No, this is me.
Okay, I get to observe the LCAP committee. Sorry, participant. But it was great. We had our parents in backup, our parents didn't ask for me to be trained at the LCAP. And so we had a wonderful meeting. Lisa Brown came over from PCOE and walked us through, walked all the vendors through. What LCAP is and what LCAP isn't, LCAP works. And probably the biggest highlight, we went over the template and we went over, hopefully all of you are familiar with the form that has the four rules on it. But the new edition is how LCAP with the hundred and how many pages? Two thirty-four pages is put in the pictures. So it's in graphics. And it's exciting to look through and see in pictures, it's easier to read and understand. And so that was, that was wonderful. So it was a great meeting and it was well received by the new members so they know what LCAP is and we have groupings that are due in August. It's inception and it's so sweet.
Great, very important. Thank you, Mrs. Briggs. Mr. Bruno, anything to report?
There's no current update to report.
I would just add that the city has requested that we meet so personally in the next couple of weeks.
The Foundation, Foundation Committee will work, will be next Monday, so I'll have something to do next month.
Okay, thank you. Recognition, Educator of the Month, October 2019, Dr. Cora.
Thank you, President Urias. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the Barbara Webster principal, Mr. Madrigal. All yours, Mr. Madrigal.
Thank you, board members. I want to say a few words about our classified person that we are honoring tonight. Her name is Erica Varios. Erica is on Health Tech at Barbara Webster. Here's what I wrote. Erica is always there if you need a bandage, if you need some ice. If you don't feel good and you need to lay down, she's there. If you have a cough, throw up. If you need someone to go through your long hair to see if you have lice, Erica Varios is the one we turn to. And she never fails us. Through hot and cold and rain and blackouts and tears, Erica has provided comfort, safety, and security to our children and our staff. Just a quick story. A few years ago, we had an older male staff come in who was having some blood pressure problems. Against his will, Erica convinced him to come up to the office daily to have his blood pressure checked because she was worried about it. So thank you, Erica, for your patience and your caring, and tonight we honor you with this award. Thank you.
You're now going to share a few words with us. Okay, well, on behalf of the board, on behalf of the board containing this certificate, and thank you for your service to our district.
If you don't say anything, you're going to be the only person in this group to say anything. You sure?
Yeah, I'm just.
So I hope the board doesn't mind, I took upon myself to change the name of the award tonight just a bit. Tonight, we get to honor Becky Conderas. I have known Ms. Conderas now for going on seven years. However, Ms. Conderas has known our school, Barbara Webster, for over, I'm just going to say 50 years, Becky, because I know it's longer than that. I don't want to waste a real amount of time. That's because for more years than Becky probably wants to think about, she has been a Barbara Webster Bobcat. You see, Becky went to grammar school at Barbara Webster. Becky's father was the principal of Barbara Webster. And when Becky got out of school, she decided she was going to follow her passion to become a dancer. But when that career ended, Becky decided to learn her passion and her devotion to teaching at Barbara Webster. Now, I like to think of Becky as the female version of Welcome Back, Barbie. Not everybody got to take this. Therefore, this award is to honor Becky Conderas and her father for all of those years of services given, service given to our Barbara Webster. See, I called it a legacy award for Ms. Conderas. Ms. Conderas has informed us all that she will be retiring. So on behalf of the countless runny noses, confused and blank looks, smiling proud faces, on behalf of the countless children that you and your father have blessed, Becky, thank you and we honor you and your family for this award.
Okay, so I guess we have to talk, right? Interesting he has said what he said because as I look around the room, I see three students from my past. Can you stand up, please, my three students? Come on, come on. So, yeah, Ali. That was a student and my current student that is a second grader in my classroom right now, I had his heart. It does continue, which is quite interesting. And I, and also, I just want to say I'm really honored that I am part of Santa Paula Elementary School District. Oh my gosh, unified school district. And especially Barbara Webster, because I used to sit at Barbara Webster, my home. I was there as a child, I was there as a young child, I was there in middle school running around. And my dad was there. So Barbara Webster does feel like home to me. And thank you to all those people that came out to support me, people I worked with and family members. And most importantly, Rudolph, my husband. Because without him, I couldn't do all the things I have done with Barbara Webster. I would down literally the camp. So that's, I guess, this. Thank you. Yes, for the next item, Dr. Cora.
Thank you, President Urias. Lastly, each month, we are recognizing our schools one at a time. And the schools that are recognizing their classified and certificate of course of the month are also highlighting a student program at their school site. So at this time, we're going to once again introduce Barbara Webster principal, Mr. Madrigal. So at this time I'm going to once again introduce Barbara Webster Principal, Mr. Madrigal.
Thank you Board and I will be brief. Just to start off the philosophy of Barbara Webster in regards to our social emotional work and structures is we view inappropriate student behaviors, inappropriate student choices just as we view mistakes made. We see these as opportunities to learn and grow. So what you have there in front of you is one of our structures. We call it a reflection form. Reflection form is designed to get students to go through a meta cognitive process. And I know that's a big word, but it's basically thinking about thinking. It's understanding yourself. If you can understand yourself and you can understand the triggers that trigger you, your emotions and how you react to them, you have a better chance of either hitting those emotions off of the past or knowing how to deal with those emotions. So I'd like just very briefly to take us through a reflection form. So let's all assume that student X has made an inappropriate choice. So if you look at the top there it says my action. And let's assume that student X has called someone else for that word. Not that that would ever happen in any of the schools, but let's assume that they have. The next part is the where, where did it happen, on the yard. So the adult who's doing this and guiding them through it is getting this information. You see in the old days and I was guilty of this many times. Student X comes in frustrated, angry. What did you do, why did you do it? With that voice. What did you do, why did you do it? I'm annoyed, I've got things to do and now you sit in front of me. This form and the work that we have done has totally transformed how I view this. Now I look at it as okay, we've made a mistake. How can we work through this? I would never yell at a student if they used a math problem. Why would I yell at a student if I get upset? I've never yelled. Why would I get upset at a student because they made an inappropriate choice? It's part of growing up, we've all done it, we've all been there. So it's helped me, it's helped to change my view of this. Next step. How did I feel right before I did that? So important, this is where the meta cognition starts. And if you look on the edges you'll see all of the emotions there, the emojis. Let's assume that student X was mad. Happens a lot of times out in the yard or in the classroom. The student must first admit what they did and this is still a little bit old schooly. Before I can teach you that two plus two is four and not five, you've got to admit that two plus two is four. If you keep saying it's five and right then it happens. I'm just going to wait you out until you agree that two plus two is four. So you have to admit that you made a mistake, which ninety-nine point nine percent of them do. The next step is what was I feeling? Now this is different for the students. And I used to be asked what they felt. It takes a minute, we guide them through it and oftentimes they'll say either I felt silly or I felt nervous or I felt scared, I felt angry. They identify the emotion themselves. For our very young students we do have to help them, but we have done this with kindergartners. The next thing was my thoughts. This is hard for some of the younger kids and sometimes we bypass this piece. But let's assume that the student says I was mad because student X was cheating at a ballgame. Happens a lot out in the yard, that's what got me mad. The next part was very new to us and I haven't been taught this. It's called the function. What did you want? When all of us make mistakes, when all of us do things that we wish we hadn't have done, it's because we wanted something. Often it doesn't have to do with the thing that we actually did. If I call you a name, I really didn't. I really didn't want to call you a name, I wanted something else. And we help the student identify this. Often it is to give someone back. To get my way because I was impatient. So we have some ideas on here for the student to think, but sometimes the student would just say, I don't know. And that's where you've got to do the work. That's where you've got to wake them up, you've got to talk them about it. Most of the time the student will identify it. In this case let's say he wanted to get someone back. Revenge is a big deal when you're very young. It's like the sales of justice. They just have to be writing. And when I don't have a lot of tools in my toolbag, you hit me, I hit you back. Now we're fair. We know as adults that that doesn't work, just leads to both people being blind. But young children do not have a lot of tools in their toolbag and so this is part of giving them those tools. The next part is where the learning comes in. A replacement behavior. The next time you feel angry, you want to get someone back, you think that the best way to do it is to call them a name. What else can you do instead? Speak to a teacher. That's the number one thing we ask to do, come and get help from us. But there's other things in there which kids will often choose. Ask to tell a good joke. Student yells out in class, everybody wanted the attention. Ask the teacher, the teacher will give them space, ask for a break. These are new tools that we're giving our kids that they can hopefully use as they get older. The last piece there on this page is a sentence frame. The next time I feel mad, everybody has thought this all through. And I want to say a bad word, I will speak to a teacher. Because, here's where the long pause comes in. And this is the deep learning. Why? I once had a teacher at my high school, I was a student at a Catholic high school, asking why didn't we, why are we good? Disappointed. Also says we're told Catholics. And he said that's the Reader's Digest version of being good. I'm just good because it's so good to be good. He wanted us to think deeper and that's what the because is. Sometimes they'll say because I didn't want to get in trouble. And I'll say, okay, I understand that. So if nobody had caught you, would that have been okay? So in other words if somebody hits you and we don't know about it, everything's fine. No. Absolutely not. So they have to think a little deeper. So many times we get, and in this case because I didn't want someone to feel bad. I don't want to make people feel bad. That's the final piece. If you turn the page over. That's for the student. But the last piece for all of us when we wrong somebody is the apology. There's been a lot of studies about this. Apologies are very powerful, not just for the victim but for the perpetrator. It helps close the loop. It helps you feel whole again as a perpetrator. Studies show that if you feel guilt, you don't apologize, you hold on to that guilt, there is a high percentage that you will do that thing again. We're trying to avoid that. So dear X, today I felt mad, I wanted to get back at you, so I called you a bad word. Would you like to express how that makes you feel? And I've seen this happen over a hundred times now. Kids are facing each other, they're giving each other. And the victim child will be honest. They'll say I felt like crying, or I felt scared, or I felt aggrieved. They're just kind of a moment of pause there for the two kids. And then the perpetrator says, or the young person says, I'm sorry for my actions. Next time I feel mad and I want to call someone a bad word, I will speak to a teacher. Because I don't want to make people feel bad sincerely. So I wanted to share that process with you. We have, we go through these daily. There's no limit on the number of these that we do with a single child. There's no, there's no limit to the amount of teaching that we do on a daily basis for anyone. And it's just one of the pillars of our associate emotional work. If anybody has any questions, I can answer them. Hope that was great.
Miss, I have a quick question. Have you, since you started, how long have you been doing this now? How many years?
Uh, two years.
Have you kept any data to see if there's any positive difference?
Yes, so we have something in our school called an Amoto meter. And that's one of the goals of the superintendent this year. The Amoto meter is connected to our Hello Yellow system. Our Hello Yellow system is students can check in anytime during the day if something is bothering them and they can check in with any adult on campus. It's a one-way system so they can talk to us, but we can't talk to them through the system, thereby forcing us to go and make a connection with that kid. So the other day I got something and a child said, read directly to me. I don't want to say the good thing. X is bothering me, can you help me? And so I went and checked in with them, but he sent it to multiple people. So while I was checking in with them, I didn't realize that somebody else was coming. Two people showed up to help this child deal with this issue. And I could tell he felt safe and comfortable. To answer your question. At the beginning, and we're still sort of at the beginning, it revealed a lot that we didn't know was going on and it tripled our workload. Because a lot of stuff is going on that we just didn't see. I've noticed this year at this point that they're starting to decline. My goal is on this Amoto meter. When students check in on Hello Yellow, the system is able to identify key words, if they're negative words or positive words. And it judges month to month on a meter. It's a happiness meter, a contentedness meter. My goal is to try to keep that thing over at eighty percent. We noticed that last year during testing it dipped to like sixty percent. Because it gets a little nervous and anxious about testing at the end of the year. At the beginning of the year it's like ninety percent, everybody's been really happy for the first month. And then about this time it starts to dip. So we're keeping track of that for hoping that it works. We're eliminating a lot of the things that we didn't see, the underground things. Yes, I do think it's helpful.
Thank you.
My question. To address the board whose first completed speaker form. Speaker forms who submitted in a later than five minutes prior to the talk are coming up for discussion on the agenda. When addressing the board trustees, please stand and be recognized by the board president, state your full names and direct your comments to the entire board. Please live in remarks for three minutes for all presentations unless otherwise informed. In accordance with Education Code 35145.5, the board cannot enter into a formal discussion or make a decision on any matter not on the education code's meaning. So let's get started. Jeanette Ortega.
This hard job that's done admitting you're wrong. I hope the teachers and administrators do the same you want the children to do because children don't have tools to do. And we as parents have to assist them. I made a phone call to Marissa Fabia concerning my son and it's about he was trying to go the wrong way in life. Going to the gangs. So I reached out to her to request some assistance for my son. I requested assistance as a desperate parent. It was in right in the hub of the gang territories. There was just two shootings one block away from my house on each side of this house. I was told by her I would get this distance. I requested. One week later I still disappeared after four games. As you can imagine, we were distraught. The next day we located him and an officer came out and talked with us and him. And this conversation I bet on this distance I asked for never took place. On Tuesday I was sent, I sent on that next Tuesday, I sent an email to her and about an hour later the school police called me. The conversation was not pleasant. I felt as if he was very negative. Amongst other things that he did, he told me. I have, I've had much trouble in this district with supporting various issues. I feel as if administrators do not want to deal with severe issues and just ignore it. I called Mrs. Fabia several times, sent messages and yet had no messages or calls from her. Last week my son was caught at school with a big pen. Do you know what consequences he received? Anybody? Nothing. No consequences at all. They did nothing to him. He was given a contract for bad grades. My son was given a detention. He was caught lingering in the hall a couple of days later. For that he got a thirty-minute detention. Today I received a phone call, frantic from my daughter from the high school. Mom arrived, knocked on. I was going up the school, up the stairs and I had to just dart into some room, ramming room. I just had to go in there. She was distraught, I said okay, try to figure out what's going on. As I hang up the phone, I received a phone call from Ms. Fabia. Ms. Fabia called me about twelve forty, school was going over at one fifty. And she stated to me that my son's shorts and his socks were one finger too long. That he had to stay in the office. Mr. Calloway said why don't you just pull your socks down? And she said no, he has to change his socks. There's some really severe issues in this district with priorities. And the way these teachers and administrators just say I choose to give this punishment for this and I choose not to give a punishment for that.
Thank you, thank you Ms. Ortega. Ann Perez.
Good evening, my name's Ann Perez. So I'm here to address the issue of the high school band room. We currently have forty-eight band members and a hundred and fifteen band members. The limit in the room is a hundred and fourteen. So that is all the band kids and their instruments do not fit in there at one. And the band looters, we have been discussing this and would like to offer a solution for people to consider. And then to currently the old mechanic shop that now houses the robotics class would be a very good space for the band to move into. Because it has multiple classrooms that currently are not being used. Most of it's being used for to store broken furniture and things like that that really need to be adjusted and run out so that they don't want to. And it also has a loading dock that would be great if we're traveling to competitions to load, to load and unload the new trailer that the district got for us. Thank you very much. So with that, we feel that robotics could move into where the band currently is. And the other classroom, I believe there's a computer lab and maybe another classroom has been used intermittently. My understanding is there's quite a few classrooms that are empty in the two hundredth area of building. Maybe those other classes could be moved over there. So the music department, as she said, it includes the choir, the band, the fonic band, marching band, jazz band, as well as color guard and the theater group. Because Jerry right now has no classroom. It'd be nice for him to have a classroom. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi there, good evening. My name's Yvonne Rockwell and I'm a resident of Santa Paula, born and raised. And I'm here to raise awareness as well regarding the high school band and color guard. There's a hundred and twenty-six students that are represented in the color guard and the band. And our, one of our concerns is that, again, it is the student's safety and the health are concerned. The current band room lacks sufficient ceiling height for the sound to resonate and release. And an average rehearsal with just one class in the current, in the current room, we gauged it, the decibels are at a hundred and twelve decibels. That's the equivalent to a chainsaw. So really, really loud. And the concern is that the noise levels are very high and can have a long-term effect on the students and the staff. My son is a first-year band student here at Santa Paula. He is a transfer student from St. Potaventure. And I have to tell you that I was so pleasantly surprised at how amazing this band program is. These kids work so hard and they're so dedicated and their sense of community is so beautiful amongst them. Just so you know, they took first place in the Fiesta Parade this summer. We just, they were at a field competition in Palmdale on Saturday. They took two first place. One was for band, one was for color guard and a second place in percussions. So look at the newspaper, there's going to be lots of photos for you to take a look at. Like I said, these kids are working super, super hard. And it gives kids that are not necessarily athletics or playing football or volleyball. No, these are academic, it's an academic class. It gives them a place to go in a sense of belonging. And they are just magnificent students. You know, they have to maintain their GPA in order to participate. So we really appreciate you listening to our families tonight and appreciate you being aware.
Thank you. Lori Rockwell.
Hello, I'm Lori Rockwell. My, I'm bringing some awareness of, we anticipate They're promoting it, they're getting traction, they're getting a lot of excitement. We're going to get potentially fifty-plus next year and then continuing that momentum. We just need to think about where we're going to be in one year, two years, three years, five years. It's a successful program. There's going to get more and more students who are going to want to participate. And those trophies will pay off. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Eric Murillo.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Eric Murillo. I'm here as a parent of band kids. I'm also the vice president of the Band Booster Club. And I also wanted to share some words with you. So in our community, everyone knows the names of Lu Lingo and Amber Oina. They've taught band in our communities for many years and the band program under them always had some success. You look around, Isabelle Gym, especially in the band rooms, you see a lot of trophies from, you know, many different events. But just within the last three or four years, with the help of the band boosters that have kind of come together within the last three or four years, the hiring of Francisco Marquez last year, and the coming together of all the programs at the different levels from elementary to middle school with Mr. Nav and now Francisco Marquez, they're really starting to build something big. The success of the program and also the growth of the program is getting bigger and bigger every year. And up to this point, we've done a pretty good job as far as the booster organization and the community and band parents in supporting these kids at different events that we go to, like the Palme de L'Event that Ms. Rockwell spoke of. And we feed them, we make sure they have what they need. We've been providing payment to some of the coaches that we feel hopefully the school board will look to pay for in the future because the program is getting so big. Let's see. So again, the band is growing. We feel like we need more room for the kids to expand. We touched on that already. And just another thing to consider along with the space, you've heard the numbers of our kids from one hundred and twenty-six, next year could grow by, you know, up to fifty students. We're going to be running out of uniforms, we're going to be running out of instruments. So those are all things to consider in the years coming soon. And I think everything else has been covered. So thank you again for your time and we'll be seeing you soon again. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Javier Magaña. Mr. Magaña, you'll get up to six minutes. Read Spanish, read English, or the English translation.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Javier Magaña. Soy, por lo menos, yo no soy padre de familia. Tengo una niña que tiene en Placide y yo niña en El Saber.
My name is Señor Magaña. I have child in Placide and child in El Saber. And this.
Yo vengo a comentarles, yo tengo una preocupación muy grande respecto a lo que está pasando en El Saber. Aclararles, mi hijo, gracias, en este momento va muy bien. Entonces, no vengo por mi hijo, pero mi hijo está en El Saber y soy parte de la comunidad de Santa Paula. Y yo le pregunto al superintendente qué plan tiene inmediato, qué es lo que se está haciendo para, para arreglar, para corregir tanto, tanto problema que hay. Porque ahorita sabemos que hay muchos problemas con los estudiantes y lastimosamente hay bastantes problemas. En estos dos últimos años, cada vez más estoy mirando, eh, de la escuela de arriba para abajo. Y otra vez, tristemente, yo ando por donde quiera, tristemente los comentarios son completamente negativos hacia la escuela de Saber. Y esto a mí no me gusta porque otra vez yo soy parte de la comunidad. Tengo, todas mis hijas están pasando por aquí, cuatro ya salieron. Entonces, vivo aquí y no me gusta que, que se hable mal. Y no hay nada más que se hable. Sabremos que hay problemas y bastantes problemas con los estudiantes. Y una de las cosas es que no es ni uno ni dos, tres padres a los que aparentemente se está ignorando. Entonces, ¿qué es lo que se está haciendo? Tenemos que buscar soluciones inmediatas. ¿Qué es lo que se va a hacer para levantar la escuela, para que no sigan para abajo? Esa es mi preocupación. Se tiene que trabajar con.
I'm very concerned about what's going on at Isabelle School. I'm a parent here in Santa Paula and a member of the community. And I am very concerned over what's going on. I'm not here to talk about my child. My child is doing well. I'm concerned about the other students. I talk, I'm everywhere here in Santa Paula and all over I hear very much discontent with what's going on in Isabelle. In the last two years, there's been a lot of injurious problems. And I want to ask the superintendent, what is planned to be done? Because I see this as a very big problem and I want to see Isabelle come up and not go down.
Por último, nos dice que no tiene que ser vista, pero que si en un futuro se viera saber qué, otra vez, qué es lo que se, qué es lo que se está haciendo, porque ya se tiene que hacer algo. Y creo que aquí tienen, en mi nivel de opinión, con todo respeto, aquí ya entra el superintendente y qué es lo que está haciendo con, con los directores. Y porque ya no es nivel director. Entonces, otra vez, se tiene que trabajar en esa directiva. Es que yo respondo, el apoyo, tenemos que ver, de veras, hay muchas cosas que, que a la mejor se mantienen ocultas y eso, y eso no, creo yo, que no hay nada bueno para la comunidad. De veras, otra vez, con todo respeto, se lo digo, no hay nada personal, mucho menos. Otra vez, mi hijo va muy bien, pero no por eso. Entonces, yo les pido la ayuda y el apoyo para que principalmente esta escuela sobresalga. Gracias.
I'm asking you for your support and also for your attention to this problem. I want to know what the superintendent is going to do and how they're going to work with the directors. Because obviously, the directors or the principals are not doing enough right now. And I want to see that, that things get better at Isabelle School. Many times, you may not know it, there's a lot of things that happen under the surface and you're not aware of what's going on. But there's a lot and I'm very concerned about what's going on at Isabelle.
Por último, no ignore the parents. Please, no ignore them. Eso es bien importante, no ignorar a los padres.
Sí.
Hay que mostrarles.
(applause) Please don't ignore the parents. It is nothing personal, but I am very concerned about the student body.
Gracias, Señor Magaña. Patricia Valencia.
My name is Fred Cora, a member of the university, and anyone here. My name is Patricia Valencia. I am here because I want to give you the attention, the computers and tablets that our students are using every single day in all of our schools right here in Santa Paula. How often do these computers and tablets are disabled? My question is because, is, uh, how can I say? Really bad stomach virus running along our whole district and infects directly my whole family. And I get this virus myself at the Renaissance High School because currently I am attending an English class over there and I get this virus over there. And then I pass through my whole family. My whole family, my kids miss some school days, my daughter misses one day of work. And this is a question that I made to only one school. I want to be honest. I just want to ask to one school. How often do computers and tablets are disabled? And they say, honestly, almost never. I think this is not safe for anyone. This is not safe for anyone and this is impacting our community. And I am really, really concerned because I am an adult and I am afraid to go back and work in the computers. Because this virus is making you feel like a part of the world, you're dying. It's really, really bad virus. I miss it to go back. And I have the option to go back or not go back, but my children are there and they have to work every day, every single day. It has to be something, uh, to the same thing, these electronics and a safe environment. If we can help, we are ready to help. And thank you so much for your advice.
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. (applause) Our last speaker for tonight is Daniel Riesman.
Evening, board. His name is Daniel Riesman, in here in town, Santa Paula. Been here representing Santa Paula Little League, just recently became a board member on the league as the fundraising supervisor. It's a position that hasn't been held in a while. So when doing so, I was going over the proposed budget or operating cost for our upcoming season. I looked at the current fee schedule for usage of school facilities. On the current fee schedule, it shows just the grass fields at the K-3 sites. I want to say it was fifteen bucks an hour. A basic season, all five school sites are used, two hours a day, people are limited on daylight. Do the math for three months, we're looking at nine grand, just for a place to practice. We don't ask you guys for anything. We don't ask you for, if the student is on site, we're not asking you for quality playing surfaces. If you've been on the fields, you know they're full of holes. The backstops hasn't been defenced in years, maybe decades. We're not asking for much, just access to the schools that we already pay for. As parents, coaches, volunteers, citizens of this town, we already pay for it. We approved the extra tax measure to put even more money into it. And we're being charged just to simply go and use the fields. It doesn't cost you guys an extra dime. A lot of the extra, a lot of the other little leagues around the county, they pay very minimal fees if any. And I'm going to do the same thing for the city council the next week. We're getting charged way over the top. I got to come up with, it looks like seventeen thousand dollars just at the gate. So we have a place to practice and we have a place to play. And let me remind you, we service the same children that you guys are servicing. Okay? If anybody's complaining about, they need to stay a little bit later or they need to be arrested at the end of the day or whatever, we're servicing their children and their nieces and their nephews and their cousins. So anybody complaining about kids trying to play youth sports needs to not be employed by our district or anywhere in this town. We're keeping those kids off the street. They're not participating in shootings that are going on in broad daylight because they'd be at practice or they'd be playing a game. We also remind you that our local sports are suffering tremendously because of this. Soccer as well anyway has barely got off the ground this year. And part of the problem is fees, a place to practice, places to play, same thing. A lot of kids are going out of town. They go play in different districts, in different towns. What does that mean? They have to travel. They get home late from practice, they have less time for homework. Your tax supports are suffering because of that as well. So it all ties together. And I'm just asking you guys to put it on the agenda, hopefully soon, possibly deal with this and possibly either dramatically reduce or eliminate fees that you're charging to our local nonprofit sports programs that are serving the same kids that you guys are servicing.
(applause) Ms. Riesman.
Hello. I thought I wasn't going to get to speak, but I'm glad I am. My name is Joe Rivas, actually the president of the Band Booster Club. So as first formal, the first formal, first formal, yeah, there you go, formal. I'm a parent, you know, a parent of band kids. And one of the things I wanted to do first of all up here is I wanted to thank you guys. I wanted to thank the board, Dr. Cora, and President Yuric for that wonderful trailer that we have out there for the kids to use. We were able to use that this weekend for the first time. There isn't a lot there. And you've got to see the kids pride in their, just their face when we're out there. We have all of these trucks following this great giant trailer, right, to our competitions where, of course, Ivan talked about, we got two first places and a second place in percussion, which is really, really amazing when we're traveling out of the district into Palmdale or other places, which we'll be going into Valencia next weekend to represent again. So this is something that we really, really enjoy. We want to say thank you guys personally for following up with us, doing the trailer and giving these kids something to be really proud of, besides the fact of having a great music program up there. Now, one of the things that we want to talk about, and I know we had a couple of our guys up here talking about certain things, is our growth. And the growth that we're having, I read it to Dr. Cora over at the youth night, and I said, "Hey, take a look at our, our band right now because it had an extra eighty kids in, and that's our band, one hundred and twenty-six plus eighty kids. That's our band in the next year, like coming up in the next year. And the next year and a half, that's where it's at. And you got to look at, because of that great program we're having down in the elementary where we have four to five hundred kids now, two hundred at Isabelle right now, and we're coming up. Now, with a program this size, you guys have to, just, I just want you to be aware of what's going on, is you have to consider, how are they being taught? Right now, our ratio is one hundred and twenty-six students to one, Mr. Marquez. Then we had just recently our principal bring on Jerry Cruz as a, as an independent contractor, as assistant director, but only for a partial of what he uses his data for the boosters. Now, all I'm saying is if you look at sports teams, you look at every other team that's out there, their ratio is twenty-five of them. And we have right now an issue that's just about to go to about a hundred and one, a hundred and two, fifty-two. Right now, we really need to help on the coaches' part. We really need help on this. Now, the parents have come up to me many times and they're asking, "Why do we have to fundraise every two weeks to pay for coaches? Why do the parents that pay the taxes, that pay all that, have to take money out of their own pocket to pay for coaches?" Something that they believe the district can help us with. So this is just something that we want to throw up for your consideration, guys. We appreciate you. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. (applause) Okay. Thank you all for your helpful comments. We are going to take a five-minute break and only a five-minute break before our presenter, our first presenter comes to the podium. So everybody come back at seven twenty-five. Ms. Riesman.
For the microphone to our assistant superintendent of educational services, this is Chrissy Scheffler, who will make an introduction.
Thank you. I just want to start by sharing with you...
to go back and working on computers because this virus is making you feel like a part of the world you're dying. It's really, really bad virus. I'm scared to go back and I have the option to go back or not go back, but my children are there and they have to work every day, every single day. It has to be something uh to the same thing with these electrons and as a virus if we can help, we are ready to help. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rivas. Okay, our last speaker for tonight is Danny Rissman.
We've been bored. He was Daniel Rissman in here in town, Santa Paula. Been here representing Santa Paula Little League, just recently became a board member on the league as the fundraising supervisor. It's a position that hasn't been held in a while. So when doing so, I was going over the proposed budget or operating costs for our opening season. I looked at the current fee schedule for usage of school facilities. On the current fee schedule, it shows just the grass fields at the K-3A sites. I want to say it was fifteen bucks an hour. A basic season, all five school sites are used, two hours a day, people are limited on daylight. Do the math for three months, we're looking at nine grand just for a place to practice. We don't ask you guys for anything. We don't ask you for custodians on site, we're not asking you for quality playing surfaces. If you've been on the fields, you know they're full of holes. The backstops hasn't been defenced in years, maybe decades. We're not asking for much, just access to the schools that we already pay for. As parents, coaches, volunteers, citizens of this town, we already pay for them. We approved the extra tax measure to put even more money into it and we're being charged just to simply go and use the fields. It doesn't cost you guys an extra dime. A lot of the other little leagues around the county, they pay very minimal fees if any. And I'm gonna do the same thing for the city council the next meeting. We're getting charged way over the top. I gotta come up with, it looks like seventeen thousand dollars just as a game. So we have a place to practice and we have a place to play. And let me remind you, we service the same children that you guys are servicing. Okay? If anybody's complaining about they need to stay a little bit later or they need to rest at the end of the day or whatever, we're servicing their children and their nieces and their nephews and their cousins. So anybody complaining about kids trying to play youth sports needs to not be employed by our district or anywhere in this town. We're keeping those kids off the street. They're not participating in shootings that are going on in broad daylight because they'd be at practice or they'd be playing a game. Let me also remind you that our local sports are suffering tremendously because of this. Soccer as well anyway, so barely got off the ground this year. And part of the problem is fees, a place to practice, places to play, same thing. A lot of kids are going out of town. They go play in different districts, in different towns. What does that mean? They have to travel. They get home late from practice, they have less time for homework. Your cats support are suffering because of that as well. So it all ties together. And I'm just asking you guys to put it on the agenda hopefully soon, possibly deal with this and possibly either dramatically reduce or eliminate fees that you're charging to our local nonprofit sports programs that are serving the same kids that you guys are servicing.
Hello, I thought I wasn't gonna get to speak, but I'm glad I am. My name is Joe Rivas,
actually the president of the Band Booster Club. So as first formal, the first form, first formal, yeah, there you go, formal. I'm a parent, you know, a parent of band kids. And one of the things I wanted to do first of all up here is I wanted to thank you guys. I wanted to thank the board, Dr. Cora, and President Yuric for that wonderful trailer that we have out there for the kids to use. We were able to use that this weekend for the first time. There isn't a lot there. And you've got to see the kids pride in their, just their face. When we're out there, we have all these trucks following this great giant trailer, right, to our competitions where, of course, Ivan talked about, we got two first places and a second place in percussion, which is really, really amazing when we're traveling out of the district into Palmdale or other places, which we'll be going into Valencia next weekend to represent again. So this is something that we really, really enjoy. We want to say thank you guys personally for following up with us, doing the trailer, and giving these kids something to be really proud of besides the fact of having a great music program up there. Now, one of the things that we want to talk about, and I know we had a couple of our guys up here talking about certain things, is our growth. And the growth that we're having, I read it to Dr. Cora over at the Youth Night, and I said, hey, take a look at our band right now because it had an extra eighty kids and that's our band, one hundred twenty-six plus eighty kids. That's our band in the next year, like coming up in the next year. And the next year and a half, that's where it's at. And you've got to look at, because of that great program we're having down in the elementary where we have four to five hundred kids now, two hundred at Isbo right now, and we're coming up. Now, with a program this size, you guys have to, I just want you to be aware of what's going on, is you have to consider, how are they being taught? Right now, our ratio is one hundred and twenty-six students to one. Mr. Marquez. Then we had just recently our principal bring on Jerry Cruz as an independent contractor, as assistant director, but only for a partial of what he uses his data for the boosters. Now, all I'm saying is if you look at sports teams, look at every other team that's out there, their ratio is twenty-five of them. And we have right now an issue that's just about to go to about a hundred and one, a hundred and two, fifty-two. Right now, we really need to help on the coaches' part of it. We really need help on this. Now, the parents have come up to me many times and they're asking, why do we have to fundraise every two weeks to pay for coaches? Why do the parents that pay the taxes, that pay all that, have to take money out of their own pocket to pay for coaches? Something that they believe the district can help us with. So this is just something that we want to throw up for your consideration, guys. We appreciate you. Thank you so much for the time.
Okay, thank you all for your helpful comments. We are gonna take a five-minute break and only a five-minute break before our presenter, our first presenter comes to the podium. So everybody come back at seven twenty-five.
For the microphone to our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, this is Chrissy Scheffler, who will make an introduction.
Thank you. I just want to start by sharing with the board and trustees that we had an amazing, inspiring day today. Today was our first official dual-language immersion stakeholder meeting and we have the pleasure of having Linda Hartman bring here, a Cabe consultant, to facilitate the meeting. And before she starts, there were over twenty-five participants at the meeting today. We had parents, community members, teachers, administrators, district administration. It was a really nice cross-section and was just so impressed by the professionalism, the advocacy for students, and the entire three hours, our lens was doing what's best for students. So I'll turn it over to Linda to give a summary of our meeting. And then the purpose of tonight is to provide the board and trustees with a DLI training as well. And we talked about before, as we enter in DLI, it takes a whole district commitment. And so Linda actually was in town yesterday and met with Cabinet for about three hours to talk about our commitment to creating this successful, sustainable DLI program, today's stakeholder meeting and this meeting in all of you. So thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Good evening, Board President, Board members, Superintendent, staff members, and community members. It is my distinct pleasure to be here this evening. I work for the California Association for Biblical Education, CABE, and I am your professional development consultant. And this is my favorite thing to do, is support districts and schools in providing this option for students. And so I will give you a little bit of our timeline to what we will be working on over the next few months, and then give you an overview of dual-language immersion. So one of the areas that we want to do is ensure that board members understand the ins and outs of dual language as well. And so we'll look at some of the policies that support our work. We will look at defining the program, the research, and then if you have questions, by all means, please share those with me. So and I want to applaud the district because as Mr. Scheffler alluded to, the energy was amazing. The groups that came together, you had representation from almost every single stakeholder. And so I applaud you for your efforts in creating that support from all different levels because that is so important to the strong, successful stakeholder dual-language program. So thank you for that. So I'll start with a little bit of our timeline for founding what we hope to accomplish this school year. So between now and December, we have quite a few tasks that we want to accomplish. So we met yesterday with the Cabinet and they asked some great questions. And so we're working on making sure they have answers to those questions. We had our first stakeholders meeting where we really got into an overview of what a dual-language program is and the research that supports that. And they have a recommendation for the board on one of the elements. And then we will be planning for staffing and hiring, what is, you know, what needs to be in place to assure that we are able to plan, sorry, hire and staff the program, looking at how to advertise and market the program, and working on, between now and December, bringing a draft master plan for you of the dual-language program, working on creating a parent survey and setting some dates for parent meetings. And so all of that will happen between now and the end of this year. And then between January and July, we plan to distribute and analyze the parent survey and use that information to support and inform the informational meetings. We so far have two and the potential for three informational meetings, both held in the morning and the evening, to support educating parents on this option. We will continue holding regular meetings with the stakeholder group and continue to provide regular updates to the board as well, and looking at hiring a teacher or teachers, depending on what grade level or grade levels we decide to roll out the program, and then providing professional development for the teachers once identified. So this is what we will be working on over the next few months. And again, we'll keep you informed as we go. And so one of the things we wanted to provide you with, kind of the political backdrop for dual-language programs right now. So in my twenty-plus years as an educator, I've been working with dual-language programs. And I don't think there's a better time to start a dual-language program than right now because there are quite a few policies in place that support the work that we are embarking on. So the first one I'll talk about is the State Board of Education's English Learner Policy and how that supports dual language. So the State Board of Education in 2017 adopted the EL roadmap. So this is California's vision of what they, how they want to support English language learners in the state of California to be successful. So academically successful, ready for career and college readiness. And if you read the last couple of lines, it says opportunities to develop proficiency in multiple languages. Okay? So our roadmap on how to best support English language learners includes having them become minimum bilingual and bilingual. Okay? And so this is one of the pathways that the roadmap calls out to reach that goal. We also look at, where's that? We look at the California's mission. And so there are some key words that show a shift in how the state of California is viewing students who come to our schools with a language other than English. And so we've shifted from a deficit model, seeing it as something other than a strength, quite frankly. And so the words where we're looking at affirming and welcoming and responding and actually stating English learner strengths. This is a new, this is a big shift in our state when we are describing English language learners and linguistic, global, diverse, and multilingual world. And so these are very strong, purposeful words and the program that we are developing will align and support this English program. Additional policy that supports our work, in 2018, the former State Superintendent of Public Schools created a Global California 2030 Initiative. And this was in direct response to the California voters on Proposition 58, where they overwhelmingly supported students learning a second and third language in elementary and high schools in our California schools. And so what the State Superintendent did at the time was create this pathway to prepare students for Global California 2030 and beyond. So he set some pretty high benchmarks for us to meet, and the current State Superintendent is supporting this initiative. And so you will see a lot of work at the state level supporting this. And so one of the goals within this Global California 2030 is seeing a significant increase in the number of students being awarded the state seal of bilinguals. So the district currently offers the state seal of bilinguals. The dual-language program would increase significantly the number of students eligible for that. It would take time for them to get there, but they would get there. So 2017, there were approximately forty-seven thousand students in the state receiving the award. And by 2030, they want to see that increase up to close to two hundred thousand. Okay? And so this is, you will see high schools doing a lot of work around this. And so you have a strong dual-language program and will also be another pathway for students. We also, within the initiative, is an increase in the number of dual-language or dual-immersion schools. So in 2017, there were about four hundred and seven. And so we're looking for by the end of next school year, hopefully closer to eight hundred, and then by 2030, sixteen hundred. So significant increase in that. And this also requires the state to support teachers acquiring the skills necessary to be able to teach in these classrooms. Because we know that as a result of Proposition 227, we don't, we have a shortage of bilingual teachers, right, because we didn't provide them with that foundation. So we're, the state is working to support that and there is a lot of focus on that right now. So that is also, I think, supports the efforts that the district is moving towards. In addition to that, our ELA/ELD framework in Chapter Two actually cites that bilingual programs in which bilinguals is the goal, which is a dual-language program, actually supports students' progress in their primary language as well as English. So students who read in their primary language actually do better in English. And so again, all of these provide the political backdrop and policy backdrop to support the work of our community. So give you a little bit of background on definition and overview, and then we'll get into some of the data that shows the results. So I'm gonna go back to the triangle. CABE is very committed to providing professional development and support so that the programs that are implemented are strong, successful, and sustainable. So we want these programs to help students over the long term really reap the benefits bilinguals and bilinguals. And we know that it takes time, it takes support, and it takes, you know, getting all of the right pieces in place. And so we are making sure that we are laying a very solid foundation so the program will be sustainable over time. And so the California Department of Education defines a dual-language immersion program as a program that we're the target language. So this is any language other than English. And so for our program, it would be Spanish. So Spanish is used for a minimum of fifty percent of the time, so fifty percent of their instructional day. And English used for a minimum of ten percent. Okay? And then for a dual-language immersion, or often times called a two-way immersion, you would want to have at least thirty-three percent native speakers of English and primary speakers of Spanish. So you would want to have a mix of language backgrounds, right? So that I sometimes call, refer to them as English experts and Spanish experts, so that they're helping each other, learning each other's language and culture. And the students who are bilingual, those kids get to help negotiate meaning and support both groups. So they see the power of bilingualism very early on. So other dual-language programs, so other programs that are considered dual-language but are not necessarily called a dual-language immersion or a two-way immersion are what we call developmental bilingual education. And really, when you're talking about program types, it has to do with the students that you serve. Okay? So the dual-language immersion has both groups of students, Spanish speakers and English speakers, together. A developmental bilingual education program is primarily for English language learners to maintain and fully develop their primary language while they're adding on English. And then a one-way dual-immersion would be English-dominated students who are learning another language. Sometimes it's the language of their heritage. So maybe their parents speak the language or their grandparents, and other times they may not be connected to the language at all, but they want to learn a second language. Their parents would let them to be bilingual, bilingual. So those three types of programs are what we consider dual-language programs because they have as their outcome bilingualism and bilinguals, academic competence in both languages, and socio-cultural competence. And they are what we consider additive bilingual programs. And by that, I mean, whatever the child's native language is, we are building upon that and adding a second language. Okay? So we don't have to lose one language to acquire the second language, which on the right side of the umbrella are what we call subtractive bilingual programs. So these are programs that replace the primary language with English. And so those would be a transitional bilingual program where students maybe receive support in their primary language for a couple of years and then transition out of the Spanish language into English. And so the goal is English academic achievement versus bilingualism and bilinguals. Okay? So when you look at research, additive bilingual programs are the only bilingual programs that close the achievement gap for English language learners and their English proficient counterparts. So that was a big part of our discussion today. And one of the big takeaways that we had was that this program is designed to close the achievement gap between our English-dominated students and our English language learners. And so that is a very, we talk about what is best for kids, that is right up there. Okay? So I'm gonna talk a little bit about program models. There are two program models that are most researched. The first one is the ninety-ten. And important to understand that when you're talking about a dual-language model, the numbers refer to how the program starts, not necessarily how it ends. So within a ninety-ten model, if you look at the different colors, blue represents the amount of instructional time in Spanish and yellow the amount of instructional time in English. And so you see in the beginning, kindergarten grade level, for example, ninety percent of the instructional day would be in Spanish, ten percent would be in English. And then over time, or each subsequent year, the amount of instruction in English increases by ten percent, and the amount of instruction in Spanish would decrease by ten percent until the end of elementary, where it is said fifty percent in Spanish and fifty percent in English. And this model, when we look at second language acquisition research, and how both groups of students, both our English proficient and our Spanish proficient, how they acquire a second language in this country for our native Spanish speakers, we want to create a really solid foundation in their primary language and add the English to it. And so this model does that for our students. Now, for our native English speakers, they need an immersion experience where they are in a situation where they're, they have to use the language to meet their needs. And so the model also creates an immersion experience for those students. So there are different pathways for the students to arrive at bilingualism and bilinguals. And the ninety-ten model supports both groups of students in meeting that need. So with the ninety-ten model, it's what we call a sequential literacy model because they are, all of the students are learning to read and write first in Spanish. Okay? So from kindergarten to second grade, they're doing mathematics entirely in Spanish, reading and writing, all of their homework, all of those primary literacy skills are being taught in English. And then during their English time, they're receiving literacy-based ELD. Okay? So they are working on studying, they're learning how to read, so we're not worried about them falling behind in reading. Because once you learn to read in Spanish, they'll transfer it over to English. And we're working on for our English learners, oral language proficiency and academic English for both our English-dominated and our Spanish-dominated students. And then when they hit third grade is when we formally add the reading and writing components in English. And so from that point forward, they are working on bilinguals, formally. So that's the ninety-ten model. And the second model that has been researched is the fifty-fifty model. And so this is what we call simultaneous literacy, because from the beginning, half of their coursework is in Spanish and half of their coursework is in English. And they are learning to read both in English and Spanish simultaneously. So from kindergarten, they're learning to read in both languages at the same time. Okay? That's a little simpler to explain. We talked a lot about the benefits, parents brought up a lot of, a lot of the benefits to the ninety-ten. They felt they could be more involved. They felt that they could support homework. They felt they could support their students. They could support the teachers in the classroom, outside in the classroom. They just felt that this really offered a space for them to be even more involved in the education of their children and supporting the district's mission and vision.
That was the parents today at the meeting?
The parents today at the meeting, yes.
Did you have any English-only parents?
That is not happening.
Oh, okay. Okay, just to get that perspective as well.
Yes, yes, thank you. And so the program at the secondary level would, secondary, middle and high schools are generally continuation programs of an elementary program. And what the requirements are to be considered dual-language at the middle and high school are two to three classes in the target language or in Spanish per semester. So typically, that is a Spanish-language arts class, moving up to AP Spanish Language and Literature and potentially a third language or some type of career readiness pathway using the target language, and then another course. So a lot of times it is history and social science. Sometimes, you know, people get creative and do do theater in Spanish. And so that's something that we're going to have discussions about and discover a dialogue about during our creation of the Dual Language Master Plan. So the outcomes for the two programs, both models are well researched, and both have extremely successful outcomes. And so when you look at the differences between the 90-10 model and the 50-50 model, both of them achieve high levels of literacy in both Spanish and English. However, you'll notice with the 90-10, it says they achieve higher levels of literacy in the two languages. Both of them, over time, show that the students begin to outperform their peers who are in English-only programs, okay? And then both close the achievement gap, and we see that the 90-10 closes the achievement gap faster. And then the 90-10 also achieves higher levels of oral language and literacy in the target language, okay? So when we looked at these outcomes, and we had discussions about which model did this committee feel most comfortable recommending to the board for consideration, based on the research, the 90-10 model would be the model that ultimately the group would recommend to the board. So that was one of our first decisions that we made. We were very excited to be able to make a recommendation or decision today, so. And it was, I believe, unanimous. I think everyone said, based on the research, they could support that recommendation. So we'll talk about research. There's over many, many, many years of research. I'm going to share with you one of the most famous studies, the Collier-Thomas study. And they, it is a very large-scale longitudinal study, over 32-plus years of research, and they have replicated their results. So it is a valid, reliable piece of research. And so they looked at English learners' long-term achievement by program model. And so if you look on the right-hand side of the graph, it details different types of programs that students participate in. So the very top, I think it's a dark blue, is a two-way dual program. So you have students who are, primary language is Spanish and primary language is English together. The hot pink bar is a one-way dual, so that's just having the one language group. And then the yellow and the turquoise, those are transitional bilingual programs, one of them late exit and one of them early exit. So they are receiving some primary language instruction, but the ultimate goal is not necessarily, is not bilingualism and bilingual literacy, it really is to transition over to English. And then the bottom two colors are when students are placed in English-only settings and they receive ELD or English Language Development Support. So the top one is content ELD, where they're receiving English Language Development Support through their content areas, which is social studies, science. And then the bottom one is a pull-out ESL, where they're pulled out of the classroom for a period of time. On the bottom, we see the different grade levels, so from first grade all the way through 11th grade. And then the left-hand side are the NCEs. And then there's a blue dashed line that shows, that would be what a typical English-only child, how they would perform on the standardized test in English. So they would be at the 50th NCE, so it's like the 50th percentile, so kind of thinking of a bell curve. And so if we look at how the students do over time, well, when they start the program in third grade, and this is important for our board to understand, because when you get that first round of CASP scores and you're all excited because this is their, you know, third grade and their first year of English, you aren't necessarily going to see them at grade level, but you're going to see, you can see from this graph clearly that the students, depending on their program, they're on different trajectories, okay? We're starting to see differences in how they're performing based on the programs that they are in, okay? And so our two-way and our one-way students are definitely at the top of that trajectory. When we fast forward to seventh grade, and this would align to second language acquisition research that clearly states and shows that it takes five to seven years to fully learn a second language, not just the social language, but really that academic language, we start to see the students in the dual-language programs meet grade-level expectations and actually exceed them, in the case for the two-way. We see the late exit and the early exit kind of flatlining and starting to take a downward tilt, and then the content ELD also kind of flatlining, and the pull-out starting to take a dip down. Then when we look at the students, if they continue in this type of program through high school, we clearly see that the two-way dual students and the one-way dual students outperform their English-only peers, okay? So they're reading and writing at grade level in English and in Spanish, okay? And then we see the other programs, how they perform. And this is a piece on academic achievement. Dr. Lindholm, there he does quite a bit of research on student attitudes and identities, and there's a lot of work around there that has very positive outcomes for students in dual-language programs as well. They're more likely to feel confident about their performance in school, they're more likely to feel that even when something is hard, they will work through it, they are more likely to maintain intergenerational relationships because they can actually communicate with their parents and their grandparents in their primary language. There's a lot of research that also supports the social-emotional development of the children as well. Collier and Thomas also looked at, I'm going to skip the one on English learners because I feel like the graph does a really good job of that one, but they also looked at, do different student groups benefit, or does everyone benefit from a dual-language program? Or is it just for specific students? And so when they break down, how do white students perform in a dual-language program? I'll explain to you the colors. On the left-hand side, we see a graph for a standardized reading test in English, and on the right-hand side, a standardized math test in English. And so the colors are, the red bar graph represents students in dual-language programs at a school. School has a dual-language program, and the student actually participates in the dual-language program. Now, the green is the school has a dual-language program, however, the student is not enrolled in the dual-language program, they are the English strand. And then the blue bar is a student that's not, there's no program at their school, and they're not enrolled in a dual-language program. And so you can see third grade and beyond, each year, the students are outperforming their peers, okay? And you see that trend, first of all, you see an upward trend, which is always positive, right? But you see them outperform both in reading and in math over time. When we look at African-American students, we see the same trend. They are outperforming their peers both in reading and math, okay? When we look at students from low socioeconomic status, the colors are different. So green means that they are not in a dual-language program, and red means that they are in a dual-language program. And we see the same trend, that the students in the dual-language program, when we compare them to students not, students from low socioeconomic backgrounds, who are not in dual-language programs, the students in the programs outperform their peers both in English and in math. And we also, they also looked at students who participated in special education, so exceptional students, and the trend is also the same, that they perform equal or better to their peers who are in English-only, both in reading and math. And so we talked a lot about this because the dual-language program is inclusive, it does not exclude students just because they learn differently. So that was the data that we have, and if you're interested, the Red Book has lots of resources on that. So these are some of the benefits on bilingualism. Students become greater problem-solving skills, increased linguistic awareness, they appreciate and understand multicultural, develop multicultural competencies, are able to understand people who are different from them, who are accepting, they are truly ready for a multicultural world. So we're laying a foundation for them to be successful in a very global society. We will ground our work in research and evidence-based practices. So the Guiding Principles for Dual Language Education, Third Edition, has research that is based on effective schools' research through the dual-language lens. So it brings together really the best of those both worlds, and so we will be looking at the different strands within the guiding principles to guide our implementation. So it is research-based. And then these are the goals, the three pillars, the bilingualism and bilingual literacy, high academic achievement in two languages, and socio-cultural competence. Those will be the goals of the program. And we will develop along the way ways to celebrate the family's commitment to dual language. And so the state has the seal of bilinguality, but there are also what we call pathways to bilinguality. So schools with dual-language programs and even without dual-language programs can offer different types of awards, and sometimes it's a ribbon, sometimes it's a certificate, a medal, et cetera, at different points in this journey to becoming fully bilingual and bilingual, and showing that they're on that pathway to receive the seal of bilinguality. So typically, that happens in the kindergarten timeframe, third grade, sixth grade, so end of elementary, and then end of middle school, to really highlight their accomplishments and celebrate all of their efforts. And so I wanted to personally thank those that are in the dual-language district leadership team, so if you're here, I say a couple of you want to stand, and thank you for being there today. Yes, so thank you very much. It was truly my pleasure to be with such a passionate team, and I appreciate, I am really looking forward to continuing to work with this group of individuals and lay some, really lay a solid foundation for your program. And so thank you for your time. Are there any questions at this point? Thank you very much.
Just a minute.
Yes, sir.
I don't know whether there are questions, it's just that I'm extremely proud of this board for passing this program. I think that it restores local control at its purest form. You didn't mention this, but there's a lot of parent input annually as well, so you track their own progress as to the successfulness, the success of the program.
Yes.
And you can't argue with the research, no. It's all positive, and regardless of your political party, you have to thank Governor Brown, Ms. Toni Thurmond, and Tori except for
The Vision.
Hacking the vision for this program.
Absolutely.
And Proposition 58, which passed with 73.5% of the vote. I have to tell you my own personal story. There's two reasons that I support this program. I went to Europe a couple of years ago, and everybody was multi-enabled except the Americans. So we're far behind in that arena. And the second thing was, as a delegate, I had to validate the Golden Belt program, the dual-immersion program at Oxford Elementary, and I saw with my own two eyes how it worked.
Yes.
And, but they were really smart because they were getting validated. They brought in students, not only English learners, but English speakers who spoke fluent Spanish during the entire meeting. I think they're proud of even more Spanish. But it works. And they helped their parents at the grocery store. I mean, it's just, it's just really phenomenal.
Yes.
So I'm very, very happy that we're able to bring this program to our district, and with KABE's help, I'm sure we'll be that successful.
Thank you. Yes, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Information items. Public hearing regarding competition of the trustee areas. Dr. Cora.
Yes, Mr. President, good evening. Ryan Furchar, Department of Strategies is here. Before any member of the public speaks, he's going to give a very quick, give the public a very quick background information regarding the trust and maps and the process, so give the information there to speak on that, and the items now are being aligned. Mr. Furchar, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President, members of the board. Ryan Furchar gave the proper strategies briefly as we go through this presentation. Kind of took the summer off from the process, so a little refresher on where we've been. Started the process back in March with the first pre-map public hearing, second one in April, sunshine these proposals back in June, held two community input meetings in August, and there's a stake on here, the second community meeting on the 28th is actually at Barbour Webster, let's see if I can scan it up on the screen, so sorry about that typo. Tonight, we have a couple of items on the agenda for this process as we move forward. The maps have been on the district website, available for public review, had the community input meetings, and tonight we have the first of at least two public hearings on the maps. So that will happen right after I'm done elaborating on for a few minutes. And then later on in the agenda, you'll have a public hearing on the waiver request. The waiver is, is when a school district goes to change its method of election from at-large to bi-area, under the law, it typically triggers an election just on the question of whether you can change your election method. Recognizing you're doing this to get ahead, not be subject to potential litigation, you can seek a waiver from the State Board of Education, like you do for other types of requirements under the education code. So you can seek a waiver from the State Board of Education so that you don't have to go through the process of an election on just whether to change your method of election. So it saves time, it saves money, it provides certainty through this process. So that's a routine matter that the State Board hears every other month when they meet, and they approve them regularly on their consent agenda. So 99.9% of districts that have gone through this process have sought for and received a waiver. So you'll hold a public hearing on that waiver request, and a couple of items down, and then following that, you'll have an item to consider approving the submission of that waiver request, which would then go to the State Board and probably be heard at their January meeting at this point, where they have a 60-day window prior to their meetings in order for an item to make their way into the agenda. So that's all before you tonight. After we've received any public comments, more discussion on the scenarios tonight, any feedback, any narrowing down of the options from the two that we have, it certainly happened. We'll hold another public hearing on the 13th of November, at which point the board could then select which map it wanted to move forward with, approve the resolution to transition officially from at-large to bi-area method of election, and send that on to the County Committee on School District Organization, the Tur County Office. They will then hold a public hearing sometime in November, December, depending on when they can schedule the meeting and get form of their membership. They'll hold a public hearing here in the district to hear any feedback from the community, hear from us, the district's process, and then consider approving your request to change your election method. So by January, you should have all your approvals in place from the county and the state to submit the information to the county registrar voters so that everything's in place for the November 2020 election. So that's kind of where we are on time. Refreshing on this, you know, the consideration that go into drawing the trustee areas roughly equal in terms of total population, drawn to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, act particulars, looking at keeping communities of interest together, looking at using natural or man-made geographic features, we want logical boundary lines that are understandable to folks, incumbency allowable consideration, so primary consideration, and then other local considerations like schools, attendance boundaries, anything else the board might want to put on. Overview of the district demographics, we're using as required the 2010 census data, which is nine and a half years old at this point, but that is the most recent count of actual residents in the school district, and we have to do that based on total residents, so of the 31,924 people who were counted in 2010, dividing that into five roughly equal areas of 6,000-plus people. You can see the population breakdown in terms of different ethnicities on total population and population 18. I'll pause here to say that, you know, we're talking about the 2010 census, we're going to have a new census in about six months, that's going to be done. That data will come out in about 18 months, so in about April 2021, we'll have new data. The district will have to look at the areas that it approves, see if the populations are in balance or out of balance based on the 10% requirement between the largest and smallest areas, and make any adjustments in time for the 2022 election. So it's a shorter process than what we're going through right now to initially establish trustee areas, but but you will have to revisit this process in 2021. Just some additional data here on citizen voting age population. You can see here the Latino population of sixty-six percent is the largest by far group and the largest protected class in the district. You'll see that in the two scenarios, all five areas maintain a majority of Latino citizen voting age population. So, we're in compliance with the federal voting rights out there. The map on the right just shows different areas of concentration of the Latino citizen voting age population. So, we have the two scenarios that we've provided for community input and feedback. So, this is scenario one, two maps. One, the second one just shows the elementary school district boundary overlay. So, you can see the theater districts line on top of this. But in both scenarios, area one is yellow, area two is green, three is that reddish one in the middle, four is blue, and five is purple. We have put all the school sites on here. We've got current trustees, residents on there, so you can see that information. On the district's website, there's larger versions of these maps available. So, you can zoom in a little bit better and see the streets that are the dividing lines there. But you can see area one is kind of the north and eastern side of the district. Area two coming closer into town there on the north side and west. Area three right in the center. Area four, the western side of it, still coming into the center of town, right about where we're at. And then, area five being south of the one-twenty-six, but extending north to track the population. You know, again, to have roughly equal populations, you're going to see areas that are geographically larger and smaller, but equal in terms of total population. This map then just puts the elementary theater district boundaries on top, so you can see that information. And then, with each scenario, we have lots of numbers to share. But, you know, the highlight here is that, number one, we're within population variance. So, our total population variance is about eighty percent on this scenario. So, that's within our ten percent limit. And then, we also have all five areas, as you can see, where the expanded Latino population is majority, smallest. It's in area two where it's just a fifty-six percent, but all the others are in the sixty, seventy percent range. And you can see the different ethnic groups on the total population and the citizen voting age population. Scenario two, it's a little bit different. I think we have here three rather compact areas in the center of the district, and then an area in the north and an area in the south that are a little bit larger and more spread out. That'd be a little bit different. I think in scenario one, we have one really compact area, and three kind of more spread-out areas. Positive or negative on either of those, but just kind of an observation in terms of what they look like. You see area five kind of is that giant area, the northern part of the district, coming down and taking in both sides of the town, the outskirts. Area three being the southern area coming in right around these middle school to get the population center there and get the numbers to get to that six thousand resident population. And then, you can see areas two, three, and four, I'm sorry, one, two, or four, kind of the center of town as you go from west to east through the district. Then, you get the elementary school district overlays as well as the demographic information, again, within the ten percent threshold. Still creating five areas of majority Latinos, citizen voting age population in one area. Ninety-one percent. Area four in that center of town, one. So, in compliance there with that, it's really just a matter of getting some public feedback if there is any, as well as more discussion at this point on concerns, questions, comments on those. So, let you open it up to the public, and then jump back up when the board has any questions.
Detective President Murius, if you're ready to conduct the public hearing, hold down the iris.
So, we will open up this public hearing at eight-ten P.M. Regarding composition of the trustee areas. And the purpose of the hearing is to receive public comment and input on the draft maps that are under consideration or approval by the district to use beginning in 2020 in a bi-trusty area election process. Are there any comments from the audience? Do any board members wish to be heard on this matter?
Can I get some more clarification on the request for a waiver? I heard you say something about, so it doesn't have to go to the public. Wanting to change, or calling back to the public to have a special election to win that to change the boundary, whether or not we go to districts or keep it as it is. Can you re-explain that a little faster, Detective?
Sure. So, under the education code, anytime a district changes its method of election, in this case, from at-large to bi-area, the law has a component that triggers an election on that question of whether the district can switch its election. Now, that was written well in advance of the California Voting Rights Act, which is where the district is being responsive to here. Potential for a man letter or lawsuit challenging the method of election. So, what districts do is they seek the waiver from that election requirement so that they can expedite this process, move forward in a way that avoids any potential litigation. If the election were failed, for example, that would be evidence. Somebody could use that to violate the California Voting Rights Act. It saves money. If there's an election on ballot, that's going to cost the district a general fund. It saves time. It just gets this process rolling forward a little bit quicker and provides certainty through the process. So, as I said, almost every district, I can't think of one that I've worked with that hasn't applied for the waiver, and I only know of one anecdotally that did for this process. But it doesn't take away the public's right to vote on board members or in future elections. It's only on the question of changing your method of election.
Thank you.
Is there any way to know, because I wasn't in attendance at the other public meetings, what their comments were from the public? Were there any, what was it about? What are the concerns of any?
I think a lot of the questions have to deal with some of the slides. Can you go back a couple of, go back, yeah, that first one, yeah. A lot of the questions I thought were based on how did these numbers come to be and where did they come from? And if you go back one more, how were those two maps drawn? Those are the primary questions that I remember. And Ms. Kolbik was at the last meeting that we had. I'm not sure if she'd like to share as well, but those are some of the comments I remember. Detective Kolbik, do you remember anything besides that?
I think there's just total confusion by the public from by us. When it finally happens, guess what figured out?
Was there any preference for one map over the other map, or?
No, not really, because no one really understands. I mean, I talked to some parents, and they, you know, they don't understand why some are smaller and some are bigger. But then I try to explain that it's based on sheer numbers of the votes here, and he doesn't. So, that's part of the reason.
So, Mr. Furchop, along those lines of what was just said, is there an easier way, or what's the easiest way in your opinion to be able to describe, looking at those maps, why are some areas smaller, why are some so big? It would be important for the board to be able to answer that if somebody asked them from the public.
Yeah, no, I think the explanation that it is based on the number of people in each area that have to be roughly equal, so we're looking for about six thousand people in each area. And, you know, just driving around, you know there's some areas of the city that are really densely populated, and it doesn't take very far to get six thousand people. And if you keep driving out farther and farther, you're going to find areas that are sparsely populated. And that's why we have, you know, scenario two, that purple area. We have to drive a long way to get six thousand people into that particular voting district. So, it really is based on people. So, regardless of how unequal they look in terms of land mass, they are roughly equal in terms of population.
One of the other questions that I remember being asked is, what happens if no one runs proposition in one of those five areas?
Sure. So, that would be treated as a vacancy on the board, and that board would then have the ability to appoint somebody to that seat. That person would have to come from that area still. But, you know, there's sometimes a lower threshold for somebody to put in a paperwork to be appointed to his spot rather than having to run for a particular seat. I'm not aware yet of a district that I work with that hasn't been able to yield candidates. Keeping in mind that now that these are smaller areas to run from, the barriers to entry in terms of cost of candidate statements, cost of lawn signs, all that good stuff comes down as well. So, it can be a little easier for folks to run these areas.
I would like to suggest that option number two, to me, I'm not an analyst, but it appears to me that option two is preferable to option one only that, only because it preserves the, it keeps the east side of Santa Paula together more than option one. A huge percentage of Latinos live on the east side of town. And I think that if you go with number one, it divides them more on the east side. Whereas, number two, it's more inclusive of that whole east area one, that whole, not east area one, east area. See what I mean? It's larger in, the east part is larger in option two than it is in option one. It goes further by a few streets. It goes further east. It includes Citrus, Fourteenth, Guyerson, Garcia, Garcia. Whereas, the first one kind of cuts it off a little bit, cuts off a few streets. And really, that's all one area. In my opinion, it should all be together.
And I think you see that as a number three. You see the area four in scenario two at about ninety percent Latino citizen voting age population, which is twenty percentage points higher than in the other scenarios in terms of the highest Latino citizen voting age population area. So, I think that's, you know, that's good feedback to hear that the way that area four is created in this scenario is more reflective of that area.
Yeah, I think it's more, it's very, it's a lot of design. It can be checked in a way. It's not even my area, but that's my opinion. I forgot earlier.
Let's get back to you.
Can you go back to the one?
Is that on there?
Yeah. Can't do side by side, can't.
Is that pretty good, Charlie?
No. One and two side by side, probably not.
Yeah, I'm going to have to do some of that. At the next meeting, we can put it to the power of maybe a side by side of the two. So, you can see.
Okay. So, now we've just had our discussion. So, as you've heard the discussion, we will close the public hearing at eight-twenty P.M. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Furchop.
Okay, information item eight-B, California's school dashboard local indicators.
Again, I'm going to turn it over at this time to our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, Ms. Kristen Shepherd.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we're going to review our district's progress on the California dashboard local indicators. Reporting out on local indicators is a newer component of California's accountability system, which now requires on an annual basis that each district in the state of California report out on progress on these indicators. I'll start with a review of the priority areas for LCFF. On the left-hand side, first column, you'll see the eight priorities of the local control funding formula. We're most familiar with the middle column, state indicators. In green, the academic indicator, chronic absenteeism indicator. These are the indicators that you'll see on the California dashboard that are most detailed, outlined in most detail and reflected in the colors. But tonight, we're going to focus in on the far right-hand side, local indicators. We're going to be looking at our progress on basic conditions at our schools, implementation of the state academic standards, parent engagement, local climate, as well as access to a broad course of study. Why local indicators, as mentioned earlier, it reflects the state shift to local control, get input from stakeholders, and design supports for districts based on local needs. These priorities are more oriented towards an implementation measure versus a summative outcome. So, you're not going to see hard percentages like you do with the California dashboard color indicators. And most importantly, the third bullet, it's important for our local community to understand the holistic picture of our district, that there's an academic focus, but also a parent involvement, a climate focus, and a implementation of our state standards. So, again, we're going to be looking at five indicators. In order to receive a rating of that, district has to do a couple of things. Number one, we have to reflect on the indicators, report out on the progress of these indicators at a regularly scheduled board meeting. And the second requirement is we have to post our progress onto the California dashboard website by November first. So, tonight is our information on progress. So, we'll start with priority one, looking at appropriately assigned teachers, access to curriculum, and instructional materials in safe, clean, and functional school facilities. Currently, we have [inaudible]. Zero misassignments. At our last board meeting, we declared sufficiency. All of our students have textbooks. And the third is we take a look at the Williams facilities business, and our schools all had a rating of good on that fit assessment. Priority two, we're looking at basic services again in terms of do pupils in our district have not only materials, but materials that are aligned to our newer California state standards? In the past five years, in English Language Arts, ELD, and Mathematics, TK through twelve, we are fully aligned to the Common Core state standards. We have also adopted material in world language, as well as sixth through twelfth grade history, social science. This spring, we will be researching and exploring TK through five history, social studies materials. They actually aren't even publishing ours anymore because of the new standards and the new framework, as well as we will research new textbooks for our ninth grade health course, which I think our book is, was published, I believe, in 'oh-four, so it's time. We'll continue to utilize our transition materials in science. We need some more learning in the next generation science standards, as well as the shift to inquiry-based teaching. And then, in the subsequent year, look at a pilot and an adoption. So, we are well on our way. We are not finished adopting standards-aligned materials. So, later this year, we'll need to come to the board requesting a resolution to continue to commit science towards purchasing standards-aligned textbooks. Our kids, our teachers need the tools in order to improve student achievement. We also, last spring, surveyed our teaching staff and to get their perception, their opinion on what is our progress in implementing the state standards. And on this graph, you'll see that we are moving from initial implementation on our way to full implementation on the far left-hand side, English Language Arts, English Language Development, Mathematics, and then towards the right-hand side, physical education. Our teachers are doing an amazing job. It was the perfect storm, new accountability system, new frameworks, new standards, new textbooks. And so, we're taking incremental steps, and as we adopt, providing professional development. And we'll continue to give this survey again, spring of 2020. Priority three speaks to parent engagement. On the left-hand side, you'll see the many committees, site and district, that we provide opportunities for our parents to become involved. On the, sorry, left-hand side, on the right-hand side are the parent involvement opportunities that we continue to provide, Title One Family Conference, Literacy Project, migrant program, many of our parents that bother us that come to our board meetings, providing for the first time a leadership training, and as well as Ms. Koberly Gary in the past, who has provided kindergarten through second grade parent and child workshops. So we are in the initial stage. We're moving towards full implementation. Full implementation will be when we have these systems set across the entire district. The highest level is full implementation to sustainability. That means that they're embedded in part of the culture in our district. For the first time last year, we administered an LCAP survey. Very proud, we have set, we had seven hundred and ninety-one respondents. And like I shared, state and federal projects, Mrs. Ramadas and staff, and tally all of those. So we are working on a paper survey, which could be scanned this year. And you can see the remainder of the bullets and how many respondents that we had. So it was, we were well represented by a variety of stakeholders, and we'll continue to administer an LCAP survey. Again, this slide just lists the parent opportunities, seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen. The bottom row, we've been approximating number of participants. We'll continue to track how many parents are involved in each of our workshops. Priority six speaks to, does a district administer a local climate survey? Santa Paula Unified does. We administer the California Healthy Kids Survey every other year. The data you see here was from spring of two thousand eighteen. We will administer the California Healthy Kids Survey this upcoming spring. The graph you see on the, or the table on the left-hand side speaks to school connectedness. Questions in this category, for example, sound like, is there at least one adult on campus that you can go to and trust? The percentages reflect strongly agree only. So you can see that we have some work to do in the social-emotional connectedness in building a positive healthy climate in our school. This is the type of information that the Board of Trustees, that the LCAP Advisory Committee needs to take into consideration as we continue to identify and prioritize our actions and services. On the right-hand side is their perception of how safe they feel while they're at school. Again, this was administered spring two thousand eighteen. We'll administer it again this upcoming spring. Bottom left-hand corner, you will see the number of students who participated in the California Healthy Kids Survey. So it's important that we continue to administer this. Priority seven speaks to access to a broad course of study. Do all of our kids have access to the core curriculum, as well as enrichment opportunities in music program? And across our schools, our kids do have access. We don't preclude any student from participating, and we've implemented measures to continue to increase that access. For example, in the middle column, second paragraph, we've added an additional period to the master schedule at Isbell Middle School, a zero-period PE, which now allows English learners and even special education students who have to take these specialized classes within the school day, that historically has replaced their elective. It allows them to take PE before school. It opens up their schedule to take the wonderful electives that we have. In grades nine through twelve, we are one of the few high schools across the county that submitted our ELD Level Three class for UCA through G submission, and that was approved last year, which means that our English learners who are in that transition Level Three class get UCA through G credit for one year in the category of English by taking an ELD class. So our staff worked real hard to, again, increase access and raise expectations for kids. As well as the third paragraph in the last column, we have additional periods outside of school day added for electives. For example, our seventh-period robotics and our seventh-period stagecraft course with Jerry Crews. And again, how do we monitor whether or not our students have this access at the, should say TK through five level? All schools turn in their English Language Development block times. We ensure that our English learners have that instruction. They turn in their PE times to us to make sure that all students receive that two hundred minutes. They also turn in their DAB schedules to their principals to make sure that we're teaching all of the subject areas, library schedules, music schedules. So all of those schedules are collected and looked at by our site and district administration to ensure that we're not scheduling things where kids don't have access as best as possible. We look at the master schedule and our CUSIS reports for the middle school and high school. We've brought on TES, the Transfer Evaluation Service, where we look at the transcripts of every single one of our high school students, and EAOP helps us with that to determine how can we increase A through G, and look at all of our groups of students to make sure that they have access to courses. And as we review that data, we have to write to, are there any revisions, decisions, or new actions that we'll implement? And so the three bullets state that we will continue to offer these before and after school electives in order to support students with impacted schedules, or students who might need to take a reading intervention class at the middle school. They go to zero-period PE, now they can take that robotics course and still get the intervention classes that they need. We'll continue to examine those DAB schedules at the elementary school, ensuring that when we pull out for reading intervention, we're not pulling out during core, that we're pulling out during that universal access differentiated time, because we don't want kids in a science, social studies, math, or English to receive intervention. So our principals do a really, really good job at looking at their master schedule and scheduling that service as best as they can outside of the core. The third bullet is what we're focusing on this year, is strengthening our data collection and analysis of students participating in career tech education. What we [inaudible 00:15:24]. Found in some of our, both of our academies and some of our pathways, is that we have few to none English learners or special education students participating in these wonderful programs. And we're now pulling data, we're now recruiting all students. So bullet three will be an area of emphasis, not only this year, but in the coming years. We need to make some shifts to ensure that particularly career tech education is inclusive, and there's equity in all kids to be able to participate in these opportunities, and we're not there yet. So that is our obligation, our responsibility as a school district, to report out on local indicators. Our next step is we take the data and we enter it in the California dashboard portal before November first, and when the dashboard comes out, late November, early December, the Board of Trustees will see met on all local indicators.
Where are any questions for Ms. Shepherd? Thank you, Shepherd.
Another wonderful job from Ms. Shepherd. Action item nine A, donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? This floor would like to thank everybody who donates, all the groups and individuals. Thank you very much. Nine B, public hearing regarding intent to request a waiver. The Santa Paula Unified School District will consider seeking a waiver from the State Board of Education that the requirement that the establishment of trustee areas and adoption of a by-trusty area election process be submitted to the electors as set forth in Education Code five oh one nine and five oh two oh. I will open this public hearing at eight thirty-five P M. Any comments? Seeing none, I will close this hearing at eight thirty-five P M. Approval of resolution two zero, two thousand nineteen dash twenty, colon, oh four. Do I have approval, I mean, a motion to approve? Second. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Uh, nine F, approval memorandum of understanding with crossing guards. Um, agreement between the City of Santa Paula and the Santa Paula Unified School District by the provision of crossing guards. Three crossing guards will be provided for this agreement. Staff recommends review and approval of the memorandum of understanding. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I'd like to have Dr. Corrigan state what's going on with that.
Sure. First of all, I want to thank the City of Santa Paula for agreeing to work with us. It's gotta be a two-way program. So the City of Santa Paula is willing to hire the company, and then we will hire the employees from the City of Santa Paula. And right now, we have three locations. We have Barbara Webster, we have Ray Steele. And the last one, we are considering Isbell School, but we want to also touch base with the City of Santa Paula Police Department to ask if there is a better third location to set that third crossing guard at. And also, we're looking at if the program goes well, because again, these funds come from LCAP funds designated for safety. We'll take a look in the future safety LCAP funds to see if we can fund additional crossing guards after this year.
Glad to know this is on the agenda. All those voting for approv, approval or? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Okay, action item nine G, approval to accept award of stop grant. Well, this is kind of nice, because this grant has been awarded for the improvement of school safety through the development of either or both of the following activities: conducting school threat assessments, or developing multidisciplinary mental health intervention teams designed to identify school violence risk among students, and implementing strategies to mitigate those risks. Do I have a motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank our own employee, Captain McGary, for writing these grants. We don't need to pay a grant partner. Our employees are outstanding in that they know what we need, and it's very clear that we're capable of doing this, so thank you.
If I can answer that, not only this time, but the next time as well, so thank you.
I'd like to take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Approval to accept another award of a stop grant for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Do I have a motion to approve? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Resolution to two thousand nineteen twenty red ribbon week. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Nine J, approval of purchase of maintenance and operation vehicles. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion to approve maintenance and operation vehicles, of purchase of maintenance and operation vehicles, passes. Five zero. Uh, nine K, establish one new instructional assistance speech position at Webster, five point five hours per day. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Sorry. Any discussion? I'd like to take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Nine now, establish one new instructional assistance speech position at Santa Paula High School in McKevitt, five point five hours per day. Do I have a motion? So moved. I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. M, award of construction contract for the McKevitt Electrical Upgrade Project.
I'd like to move to reject publics.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mrs. Colby. Uh, nine N, quarterly report on Williams uniform complaints. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Consent calendar. Uh, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
I'll second it. Um, any discussion on consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. How many in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent calendar passes five zero. Board member comments. Mrs. Colby.
I just, I stopped in at the Barbara Webster celebration of their success, and it was really exciting to see such happy faces. I didn't get to see the kangaroo, so I should have planned my day more accordingly, but maybe next time. As far as requesting a high five, to request maybe a tutorial or something with this new agenda online, even the best of us are not very good at it, because I can't even imagine the public or Spanish-speaking families knowing how to even get to our agenda. So now you have to click three or four places, there's a little, and I know I'm never gonna go advocate an agenda online, but if anyone approves an agenda online, I think I'm less than gonna advocate. So I think there's, you gotta come up with a tutorial, an explanation in Spanish, so parents can actually see it on the web.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mrs. Colbit. Uh, nine N, quarterly report on Williams uniform complaints. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None, motion passes five zero. Consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
I'll second it. Any discussion on consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. How many in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent calendar passes five zero. Board member comments. Mrs. Colbit.
I just, I stopped in at the Barbara Webster celebration of the success. And it was really exciting to see the happy faces. I didn't get to see the kangaroo, so I should have planned my day more accordingly, but maybe next time. As far as requesting a high five to request maybe a tutorial or something with this new agenda online, even the best of us are not very good at it. Because I can't even imagine the public or Spanish-speaking families knowing how to even get to our agenda. So now you have to click three or four places. There's a little, and I know I'm never going to go advocate an agenda online. If anyone approves agenda online, I think I must have been out there. So I think there's, you've got to come up with a tutorial. An explanation is Spanish, so parents can actually see it on the website before they start clicking. It's unacceptable because agendas are supposed to be for the public. And they're supposed to be, and even though we've followed the letter of the law, I think if you asked any person here if they'd actually seen the agenda, it probably would not have played. So it's just a suggestion. Secondly, I'd like to also, on future agenda items, I'd like to add that we consider the budget periodically. If, even though we do have a positive, it does not mean that we don't need to set higher.
Mr. Renner?
I just want to thank the board for approving the crossing guard item tonight. I think it's going to be a successful thing here in the city. And hopefully, a lot of drivers will slow down to use crossing guards. And I really wanted to thank the City of Santa Paula for partnering with us to enhance the safety of all students and families of the City of Santa Paula. So thank you very much.
If I can answer your question. Part of the stop grants, I'm working with the City of Santa Paula Police Department, looking at through the stop grants for some other fundings for safety. Looking at those speed boxes as you drive by, it shows you what you're doing, it flashes if you're going too fast. We're trying to work with the city to go half and half on several of those boxes in several locations. So that should also help.
Mrs. Mary? Um, first, first of all, I'd like to thank our student board member, notes being printed out. She always has such a list that I try to write them down and get lost halfway or miss the school. So that was nice to have, have those notes. So thank you for that. There, there's so many wonderful things happening month to month. It's hard to mention them all. The family conference was wonderful. That was fun to go to. That was my second meeting that week that I sat through in Spanish. So it was, I'm practicing. So that was, it was wonderful seeing the turnout. It was great. So kudos to Ms. Shepherd and Ms. Renares for doing that. And it was also fun in your board update, Dr. Cora, to see that acknowledgement of two of our high school teachers, Ms. Renares contributing to the book. So that was, that was fabulous. It makes us really proud of our staff. I want to thank the district for this being homework help and free help at the library. The first day, we didn't push it out. The very first day, some people knew. And until the high schoolers show up, I didn't want to send it out to principals as a reminder, but six eager high schoolers were there the first day. They always bring their homework just in case children show up. And on the second day, about six children, I pushed it out to principals and to school districts. So thank you for putting it up on social media. And there were about six students there the next day. And one high schooler, it was her first year she's participated for community service. This was a great first day. Whoa, that was, that was fun, fun to hear. Also wanted to thank Shepherd for the special board meeting and all the data that you provided for us. It was a long meeting, but it was, it was wonderful to hear. And especially, I know the one, the one data that meant the most to me was that math data that was given at the very first. And when you said that the principals had a hard time with that, that's not what the results are for, what a gift to the teachers to know what was missing. They helped them build on that data for the next year. So thank you for that. If we get past the point of, it's not about us, it's about the kids and that gave information to the teachers. And that was wonderful. So thank you. And one, one last thing that I was made aware of today. Ned Branch at the library went to an Tetera County Foundation meeting talking about the two thousand and twenty census. And one of the things he said was that Santa Paula and Ossinon are one of the top five cities that are going to be under, that's projected to be underrepresented in the census. And for every undercount, the, the county loses eleven hundred dollars in services. So it's really important for our families here to be counted. And if there's any way that we can support that with whatever, they're working on different ways to give out to families that is not connected with, with your citizenship, that is for public services. And for every house that doesn't participate, you lose as a county eleven hundred dollars. So it's huge. And to, to hear that Santa Paula is going to be one of those top cities that are going to be, they think is going to be underrepresented, it's going to mean a lot to our families. So if there's anything we can do as a school district, if we can look into it, whatever, it is going to help our community. So I'd really like to look into that and bring that to the board on whatever, of anything we can do. Thank you.
Has the district been asked for contributions?
Not by contribution. I know I'm going to be working with Mr. Beard. I attended the meeting. It was in Camarillo, Camarillo location. But I attended that meeting and I can help on whatever.
Mrs. Thompson, yes? Thank you.
Well, I'd like to piggyback on what Mrs. Dean said about Natalie Rock, against our commission of activities. I was astounded by the number of things that are going on in all our higher schools and really positive things at every single one of them. And I think that just speaks to the people who are charged, the teachers, everyone who's there. They're, they're willing and the coaches to do things with kids and make sure that there are plenty of opportunities for them and their parents. And then I'd like to say, and I'm, everybody around here is tired of hearing this story, but I'd like to share, because I know it's being recorded, that at the JV game last week, there was a sweet thing that I saw. The, the people that we played, the team that we played was sort of, and one of the sort of players got injured. Pretty, he was, he seemed to be hurt pretty badly. He was laying on his back. And two of our JV Cardinals went over and squatted down by him and were comforting him. And one of them was even patting on his helmet and talking to him. And until the coaches got over there, and even when the coaches got there, uh, the captain of our team, number forty-four, Sean Pettit, or Petit, I'm not sure how to pronounce it. Uh, he escorted the young man along with the coaches back over to his, over to his sideline. And I just, that was an extraordinarily example of good sportsmanship. And I know the coaches at our high school are, are teaching that. My grandson also plays it. I hear from him how they talk to the kids and how they try to instill these things in them. And I just wanted to say, I, I text Mr. Cora, Dr. Cora, and I told him about it because I was so proud. And I, I text my fellow board members. And he said, I'd rather hear that kind of thing than hear that we won. And I said, that's really nice, but we did win too. Good, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Never bothered to hear a story that's impossible. Um, speaking of budget that Mrs. Colbit mentioned, the Vitera County School Board Association will be conducting professional development for school board members on Monday, October fourteenth at six P M. The topic will be the budget. And that, you're welcome to attend if you like. I know Mrs. Thompson and myself and Dr. Cora are going, but anyway, seems to be a, a topic that we should be providing information from. And yesterday, I had an opportunity to visit the high school around five thirty P M. I visited the athletic department. And that high school is the most, had the, is the most beautiful school around. It was, the sun was setting. The football players were practicing out there. The polo team was in the pool. Everything, it felt so magical. It felt so beautiful that time of day, five thirty P M. And I was very grateful for my blessings at that time to experience our athletic program at its best. And with that, we have a future board meeting of October twenty-third and then our regular board meeting, November thirteenth. And this meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-five P M.